Good evening, everybody. It is 6:30 PM. I would like to call the Tuesday, March 20th, 2018 Meeting of the Superior Comic Council to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Counselor Van Sickle.
Yes.
Counselor Bender.
Yes.
Counselor Sweeney is excused.
Counselor Fennessy.
Yes.
Counselor Elm.
Yes.
Counselor Ludwig.
Yes.
Counselor Sutherland.
Yes.
Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Counselor Dahlbeck.
Yes.
Youth Counselor Hale.
Yes.
Youth Counselor Levine.
Yes.
And Youth Counselor Newman.
We have a quorum. I'm sorry, Counselor Ludwig? Your light is on.
Oh, it is? I'm sorry, I was just pulling this.
I was confused.
I was just pulling this towards me.
It's been awhile.
My contract is sick.
Under Proclamations and Commandments, I do have a certificate here for Eve Graves. Is she here? Hey, come on forward. So, this is a certificate. Many of you may have seen on Facebook and in the news media, we had a rebirth of a triathlon here in our municipal forest, the Stride Ride Glide. So, I would like to read the Certificate of Appreciation on behalf of the City of Superior. Presented to Eve Graves in appreciation of your efforts spearheading a volunteer-supported fundraiser that raised over $1,700 for the City of Superior Parks Department. The Stride Ride Glide Triathlon made its debut March 4th on the trails in the Superior Municipal Forest. The race began with a five-kilometer run, then a 10-kilometer bike, and finished with a 10-kilometer ski. The event added the cross-country ski segment to go with the traditional running and biking triathlon aspects, giving the race a superior touch. The money raised went to the Superior Parks Department to help offset costs that go into maintaining high-quality ski trails. This year, the city purchased new grooming equipment, groomed the ski trails in the forest, and had the ski shack open seven days a week. The event promoted use of trails and brought positive attention to the city's beautiful municipal forest. A special thank you to you and all of your volunteers for your generosity in giving back to the community. And I think that kind of says it all. I just wanted to add that these forests, this forest and trail really are better when people are in them, when they're using them. And so, we need citizens to help bring people to experience them, to help protect them, and to promote them to the wider community and bring more people to come and visit and enjoy the things that we have. So, on behalf of the city, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Come on, say it, Ludwig.
I'm not used to doing this, but, um, thank you. I didn't expect anything. I like to put things on and raise money for places I like. We did get, I'm not sure if you saw the TV coverage, but all three stations were out there pretty much the whole time. We were on three stations, and then WDIO did an extra piece, and Fox did one ahead of time. Next year, I'm planning to do it March 3rd, so if anybody wants to volunteer or come out and try it, you can do it as part of a team.
Thank you.
Can I turn this off? Item number four, the approval of the minutes?
Second.
There's a motion by Counselor Dahlbeck and a second by Counselor Bender to approve the, I'm sorry, to approve the minutes. We have two sets of minutes, the regular council meeting and the committee of the whole. Counselor Dahlbeck, was your motion for both?
Yes.
So, was my second.
Thank you. So, the motion then is to approve the minutes from both the February 6th, regular council meeting and February 6th, committee of the whole. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 5.1 is a resolution, excuse me, it's a public hearing, for a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission to vacate the alleys located in Webster Park between Tower and Ogden Avenues and North 57th and North 58th Streets.
Is there anyone that would, I'm sorry, we need a motion to open the public hearing?
No.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Olson to open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak in the public hearing? Would anybody like, regarding this particular amendment?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, we'll get you at the end of the meeting, sir. Would anybody like to speak to the issue of the vacation near Webster Park? And finally, would anybody like to speak in the public hearing? Seen none. Is there any discussion from the council? Then, is there objection to closing the public hearing and referring this to the Plan Commission?
So, I will.
The motion is by Counselor Bender and the second by Counselor Kern to, I'm sorry, Counselor Olson to refer this item to the Plan Commission. Discussion, sorry, Mr. Sark.
Just to prove it. We don't, we already heard it at Plan Commission.
Fair enough. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Um, and I have a second.
For giving a little bit of confusion, we have a motion to approve the, to approve the vacation of Tower and Ogden Avenues between North 57th and 58th Streets. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Counselor Olson, you added a motion?
If we could move 7.1, subpart 8, I believe, no, wait. My computer's all messed up.
I think that's correct.
All right.
7.1, item 8.
The issue on the bonds.
Issue on the bonds, I have it as 11.1.
There you go, the resolution. Yep.
Your motion is to suspend the rules?
Motion to move that to the front of the agenda.
So, we have a mo, we have a motion to suspend the rules to consider item 11.1 out of order by Counselor Olson, was the second by Counselor Fennessy. Is there discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. 11.1?
11.1? I'm sorry. Okay. 11.1 is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2018A of the City of Superior, Wisconsin.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second is by Counselor Ludwig. Discussion? Seen no dis, Mr. Bronson, nothing to add? Okay. Seen no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. We are back in order.
Item number six is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
The motion is by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Dahlbeck.
Um, there is a, never mind, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, we have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Is there discussion on the consent agenda? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. We are back in order.
Item number six is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
The motion is by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Dahlbeck.
Um, there is a, never mind, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, we have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Is there discussion on the consent agenda? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Okay. Item 7.1 is the Finance Committee from February 8th, 2018. And here is where there's actually a correction to 7.1, number two. It should read, "To accept the proposal from Young Plumbing and Heating as written for grease disposal fees for a total due of $13,660 with terms of 12 monthly payments at 0% interest and separate accounts set up for the grease loads."
What is the change?
There's, it's, yeah, there's the dollar amount. It's listed here as the $13,600, and it should be $13,660.
Gotcha. Is there a motion to approve item 7.1 with that change?
Second.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Dahlbeck, to approve item 7.1. Is there discussion?
I guess I'd like to move to separate out item 8 under 7.1.
Is there objection to separating item 8? Seen none. Item 8 will be separated. We are still on item 7.1 absent item 8. Further discussion?
There, I apologize. There's also a change at the 7.1, item 5. It looks like, do you want me? It should read, "To approve the updated investment policy to allow for investment and certificates of deposit with up to a five-year maturity date and to update the name changes of the financial institutions and security brokers, dealers currently utilized by the City of Superior."
Is there a motion to amend, to add, to correct that language?
Motion.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Dahlbeck, to amend item 7.1 with the just reference language. Is there discussion on the amendment? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item 7.1, item 8.
Um.
I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve item 8?
Yeah, Olson. Second.
The motion is by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Bender, to approve item 8, to approve eliminating the city health insurance benefit for non-union part-time employees. Discussion, Counselor Ludwig.
Um, I guess I, I'm against this because, number one, I think this is, should come through the Human Resources Committee. I believe it's a personnel item. And, number two, I guess I, no one knows what the future brings, and, you know, in this day and age when we hear employers all the time saying, you know, they're having a hard time finding employees, and I would hate for us to eliminate one more incentive, one more benefit to find a qualified employee, even if that employee is a part-time employee. So, so I guess I, yeah, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Olson.
If I could, Mr. Bronson, do we have any part-time employees that this affects right now?
We have one employee that would qualify for this benefit, but they have chosen not to enroll in it. So, there are currently zero.
So, virtually, we're looking at trying to eliminate something that doesn't affect us financially.
Correct.
Could hinder employment when we're, when we're in the market looking for part-time employees to, in our city, and which we, we do a pretty good job of finding people that we want to work for us. I think if you look at the history of the employees in the City of Superior, that longevity is, is a good long-term. You can, you can look at the wage study to see how people, how long people work here. With that being said, I just, I don't know why we would deter trying to provide health insurance for some. It's the most important thing you've got, is your health. And if you don't have insurance, it'll break you in no time at all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Fennessy.
To answer your question, the reason why this was at the Finance Committee is because this was part of the, the whole thing when we were going through all of the different procedures that, you know, kind of landed in the Finance Department, and that's where it was approved. I, I think this basically just puts us in line with every other employer out there. Health insurance is an incredible expense, and for the, for the city to be able to offer that to a part-time employee is incredibly expensive. And really, no other industry offers a full healthcare package to a part-time employee. So, really, it's just cleaning up what we're really not giving anybody right now anyways. So, if, I, I think this makes, this makes sense to remove it from the, from the policy for many reasons.
Thank you. Counselor Dahlbeck.
Well, I agree with Counselor Ludwig. I think we should keep it in there. We get a part-time employee who works 38 hours a week, and they're not entitled to benefits because they're part-time, non-union. I think even part-time people can join the union, so I think we should just leave as is. Why are we trying to eliminate it now?
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Van Sickle.
I just want to echo the opinions of Counselors Dahlbeck, Olson, and Ludwig. We're a good employer. We, we're not just a business. As counselors, we swore to run a government with compassion, I would hope, and it's not the sole duty of the city to save money. We have other duties and responsibilities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion, Counselor Sutherland.
I agree with Ludwig, too. I feel like if you offer these incentives, you get a lot more, better work out of a worker, how do I say that? But you get, it's, the outcome of it will be a lot better if we offer these insurance, this insurance and whatnot. So, I approve with what she says, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kern.
Did this go through HR before it came to finance, or did it just come directly to finance?
I believe it went directly to finance first.
This was considered at the HR Committee last night and was, I believe, referred to their next meeting, if I recall correctly, based on the actions the council would take tonight, depending on what the action of the council tonight.
With that, with that being said, not, I think, having HR to look at and kind of hindering what we're at tonight, why don't we just save a step, and I'll make a motion to refer it back to HR for their next meeting to have more discussion on it then.
So, there is a motion by Counselor Kern, a second by Counselor Fennessy, to refer to the Human Resources Committee. Discussion, Counselor Van Sickle.
Can I just ask one question? From the Finance Committee, Counselor Fennessy spoke on why this made sense to him at the time. To the other members of Finance Committee, could I also maybe, just maybe have some more clarification on information why this, why this was passed through Finance?
That is the privilege of those members. Is there further discussion? Seen none. The motion is to, I'm sorry, Mr. Bronson.
I could just comment on the financial impact of, of offering the benefits. If we were to have a part-time employee with family benefits, it would be a cost to the city of $21,742. Employee plus one would be $14,162, and then a single person, the cost to the city is So, that's kind of finances behind it.
Thank you. The motion is to refer to the Human Resources Committee. Is there further discussion? Seen none. All those in favor of referral, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 7.2 is the Finance Committee minutes from March 8th, 2018.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Ludwig. Discussion, Counselor Olson.
If I could, to pull 72.2, subpart 2.
Item number 2?
Yes.
Is there objection to separating item number 2? Seen none. That will be separated, the balance of item 7.2, Finance Committee, from March 8th. Further discussion on item 7.2? Counselor Olson, you had nothing on the rest of it, I'm sorry. Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item 7.2, item number 2, to approve the proposed service agreement with Munilink for utility billing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Counselor Olson, a second by Counselor Ludwig, to approve item 2. Discussion, Counselor Olson.
Diane, is it with this for you?
Yeah.
So, the only question I have is the travel expenditures from Munilink. There is $7,000 fee, and then there is the allowable ta, or, travel fee, the Department, Department of Transportation or federal government allowance for travel. I think it's 53 cents an hour, or a mile. Are these people coming from Pennsylvania?
Yes, they will come from Pennsylvania for training.
And they will drive here from Pennsylvania?
I'm not sure if they're going to drive or fly. It seems like it would be cheaper to fly, but they do have this in the agreement. I didn't really question that. I can certainly do that before we actually sign.
Okay. And then, the other point would be the $50 an hour. Is that from, let's, if we're flying, let's say wheels up, wheels down?
If we're flying.
Or if they're driving, is it coming from their home office in Pennsylvania to here and back?
Yes.
Do you have a number for that?
I don't. I do know that, that they should be able to do all the training in one instance of coming here. With the last software that we had, we didn't even get a training. But they plan on coming and training both people in the Finance and the Utility Billing people in my department, so that we get everything right to start with.
When you say they, how many people are we looking at?
We're looking at one person to come and do the training.
I would like to make a motion to refer this back to the Finance Committee until we get those numbers. That's a large amount of money, one way or the other.
Did I hear a second?
Yes, I said.
The motion is by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Bender, to refer this item to Finance Committee. Is there discussion on the referral? Seen, Counselor Fennessy.
This is, anytime you do some kind of software or where there's training or anything, this is, this is pretty standard. I'm actually surprised there's not lodging in there and meals reimbursed, too. This is, this is really standard for, for any kind of training that you have for any kind of implementation like this. So, I, I don't have a problem with it.
Further discussion on the motion to refer? Seen none. All those in favor of the referral, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. 7.3.
Item 7.3 is the minutes from the Planning, Plan Commission from February 28th, 2018.
Standby, Counselors, please. President Olson, would you take the chair for this item? I need to recuse myself from item 7.3. Grab it. Is that? I do, not you. I'll travel.
Okay. So, we are on 7.3, correct? And what do we got going? Okay.
I need a motion to approve.
So, there's a motion by Counselor Bender, second by Counselor Fennessy. Any discussion on this issue? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll, same sign? Motion carries. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Item 8.1, City Clerk Kalanis requesting approval of miscellaneous licenses.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Dahlbeck. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 7.1, City Clerk Kalanis requesting approval of Amendment 6 to Nama G Golf Course operating lease agreement with Nama G Public Golf Course, extending the lease agreement through December 31st, 2019, and also approve the $81,400 capital major maintenance improvement plan for 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion is by Counselor Kern, the second by Counselor Olson. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 8.3, Police Chief Alexander is requesting approval to forego seeking bids for the purchase of an emergency operations vehicle.
The motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, the second by Counselor Sutherland. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 8.4, Finance Director Vito is requesting approval of Amendment 6 to Nama G Golf Course operating lease agreement with Nama G Public Golf Course, extending the lease agreement through December 31st, 2019, and also approve the $81,400 capital major maintenance improvement plan for 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion is by Counselor Kern, the second by Counselor Olson. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 8.5, Finance Director Vito is requesting approval of the 2018 miscellaneous budgets.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. 8.6. 8.6, Counselors, has been referred in a previous motion. Is there objection to considering this referred as well?
Yes.
There's, there's no objection? Sorry, I phrase that differently every time. So, there is no objection to this being considered referred? Thank you.
Item 8.7, Public Works Director Janigo is requesting approval of a five-year fixed base operator agreement with Brennan Hawkins, doing business as 100 Octane Aviation, to lease the northeast portion of the city-owned hangar A1, currently unoccupied at the Richard I. Bong Memorial Airport.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 8.8, Public Works Director Janigo is recommending the award of construction services for the municipal service building improvements, Phase 1 project, to the Jamar Company, at a total proposed cost of $3,748,750, including the base bid and three alternates. Also recommending the transfer of 2019 and 2020 CIP MSB funding to the 2018 CIP program. The transfer of funding will allow completion of the needed MSB improvements in one phase.
The motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Seen none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 8.9, Director of Parks Recreation and Forestry Kadat has a presentation regarding the Pickle Pond Remediation and Restoration Project.
Director Kadat.
Well, there's not actually a presentation on it, but the council did receive the briefing that was sent from, put together by Joe Graham from the Wisconsin DNR, along with the map. And there's no action requested from the council this evening, but Joe Graham and both Darian and Joe are here to answer any questions on the, the project, and the next steps would be an agreement would come forward. The plan is next, in April, either the first or second meeting in April, for an approval of the agreement for the project.
Questions? Or discussion? Counselor Kern.
I just want to say, it's been a great working partnership with all the different parties that have been involved with this, and it also adds to the initial plan that we're doing on Barker's Island right now. So, I just want to say, keep up the great work, and I look forward to seeing some of these plans come through this summer. So, thank you.
Further questions or discussion? Thank you.
Item 8.10, Director of Parks and Recreation and Forestry Kadat, President, has a presentation on the City of Superior Canada Goose Management Plan.
Director Kadat.
I do have a presentation on this. All right, I will try to be quickly, or move quickly on this. I know it's going to be riveting, and you're going to have potentially some questions, so bear with me. Been looking at the Canada Goose Population Management Plan for some time, started back in August, and bringing an update on the overall plan for 2018. But first, I wanted to ask you if you've ever noticed that geese often will fly in a V formation, and that one side is longer than the other, and I wanted to know if anyone knew why that is.
There's more geese on that side.
A-plus. All right, Canada geese, what's the problem? What have we implemented thus far, and what is the management plan that is being proposed? So, you know, really, what, what is the problem? They're cute, they're, they're fun to watch, they're a part of wildlife, and a lot of people appreciate them.[1743.98] The challenge that we're running into is the population. It's the number of them. It's not the fact that they're geese, but it's the pure number of them. So in the past 50 years, the, the numbers have rose, and in some cities in Wisconsin, there are more geese in the city than there are residents of our community. Right now, right now, the, the numbers are up 22% from 2016, and over 64% of the long-term average. You know, the obvious challenges in parks are, there are goose, one goose, adult goose produces six pounds of fecal matter per day. So, you know, we have thousands in the city, and we have people who clean up after their dogs. Unfortunately, we don't have someone other than our department and a lot of other working partners cleaning up or trying to maintain and mitigate the, the fecal material from all of the geese. So Barker's Island Marina, one of their number-one complaints, a great partner to the city, one of our gem on Barker's Island, their number-one complaint is geese. Boat launches, challenges with keeping the docks clear of fecal matter. City crews pressure washed them weekly, and paid consultant pressure washed them a second time in the week, yet we would still have multiple complaints from boat launch users of, of fecal matter. I had a gentleman with one leg call me, and he indicated that in order to lower himself into the boat, he actually had to get onto the dock and nearly slipped several times because of the amount of fecal matter on our docks, and that's being pressure washed twice a week. The piers and the walkways were often used by geese, to the point where they really, got to the point where they were deterring human use. Runners complained about slipping on fecal matter on the trails. They are very aggressive while nesting. Even the mayor indicated that he was aggressively chased during one of his runs, and, and multiple people indicated that they would not run certain paths because of, of the geese. Our golf course, which again is a strong partnership, one of their number-one complaints was geese and management of geese on the course. I was chased by a geese, a couple geese when my ball went into a sand trap, and obviously, I know the solution is to not hit my ball in the sand trap, but, you know, there, a real problem there as well. Wildlife restoration in the estuary, the partners are having real challenges and spending thousands and thousands of dollars reseating and trying to establish wild, wild rice, but they are, the geese are literally eating up those projects. Beach closures, Barker's Island Beach closure, one of the main reasons for that closure, after testing, is shown to be E. coli specific to, to geese. The grain elevators, Husky, Amsoil, Embridge. Husky reported that they had power outages due to the number of birds in their area and hitting the lines, the grains being taken from the elevators. So clearly, you know, we've had some challenges, and, and therefore, we're, we're looking at, you know, it's collectively as a community, there is, there is a challenge with the, with the population problem. I mean, there's a real problem. So what have we implemented thus far? In a meeting back last August, of course, with Department of Natural Resources, Wildlife Management, and the USDA Animal Plant Inspection and Department of Agriculture. I'm gonna go through this really quickly because it's a lot of action that, that has already brought forward and has been taken. So we implemented some management strategies, looking at some increased hunting and exposure, and designating some areas in town, partnered with the police department on some of that recreational hunting, an ordinance to prohibit the feeding of waterfowl, and then, of course, scare tactics to try to get the geese out of areas, and aligned our regulations with the state regulations, identified maps in areas, got some good press coverage on encouragement of that. And when it was all said and done, roughly 50,000 geese were harvested in the state. Roughly in the city limits, only 200. So, you know, ultimately, it is very well-recognized that there's no one solution that will really manage the, the geese population, and hunting is definitely reactionary, and anything that we can do to, to prohibit and discourage the increased population growth is, is necessary. So scare tactics, at certain times of the year, you can use pyrotechnics, which we have used and will plan to continue to use. The redesign of the Barker's Island Beach area, part of the reason why, the main reason why we received this funding is because of the E. coli, and it was on the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative funding because of the level of bacterial E. coli and the, the number of beach closures. So part of this design will really focus on how, ways to mitigate geese from being in those areas with all the plantings around the boardwalks, and discourage them from being there. We have a, a lot of areas in town that are very beautiful to both the human and attractive to the, the waterfall as well. So looking at some of the different, like I mentioned, really need to have a multi-pronged approach. We have an ordinance to prohibit feeding, like that to be strictly enforced, proposing egg oiling, using the bird pyrotechnics and other scare tactics, repellents in our big, open, grassy areas, the landscape redesign when possible, especially that Barker's Island Beach area, encouraging both the hunting, the sports hunt, again, and the police department hunt in city areas should that be necessary. And we hope to avoid the roundup and, or relocation, processing, or mass disposal of birds. I will say that we did have the Department of Agricultural gentlemen join us at the Parks Commission, and, you know, really, that hoping to avoid is, is a hope to avoid. We're at a pretty unfortunate tipping point, and not a lot of cities right now have the amount of geese that we have. And back in 2006, when he was originally here to kind of help us with it, not a lot of steps were taken to stop us from getting to this point. So unfortunately, now it's coming down to us to, to try to, to turn this. So with that ordinance of no feeding, you know, that's really to protect the health and safety and welfare of, of the community and also the wildlife. You know, it's not, it's not good to feed them. It can interrupt their normal migration patterns and make them more aggressive and demanding food. And since August, when this was passed, this is a picture taken off after that ordinance was passed, and you could see several people in the same location throughout the week. So really needing to strictly enforce the, the no-feeding ordinance. So the Goose Management Plan associated timeline, kind of outlining, you know, from December to March, was, was really putting together that plan. We met with stakeholders in the community leaders to discuss coordinated efforts. We did bring in Geese Peace for, to facilitate one meeting, and reached out to various stakeholders and had representatives from all these organizations show up. The one thing that was very clear is everyone is kind of pulling their hair out and not sure what to do because they all recognize that there's a major problem, but have tried a lot of the things, have tried the silhouette dogs, have tried scare tactics, have tried a lot of different things, and everyone is like, please, what can, what can we do? So Geese Peace, really, their focus is on the, and their strategy is focused on egg oiling and reducing the population before they get to this point. So again, although there's a lot of different things that we're gonna look to implement, this is not, there's not a, a one easy fix here, and that's what I really need to emphasize because no one really wants to be here in this situation recommending something that is not a desirable outcome. So coming, going forward, you know, this late March, early April, May, strict enforcement of the no-feeding. As they're starting to come in, as the, the water starts to open up, and as birds start to come in, we can't encourage them by, by feeding them. So if we get ahead of that, late March, April, early May, complete the egg oiling permit and identify the partner organizations and volunteer groups that would look to assist with this. And, and really trying to, to locate the nests in the area. One of the things that was discussed that is very unique to our area is the number of areas where geese can hide and nesting. So something, well, worth noting is that PETA does support egg oiling. You know, they support it as in, you know, obviously, you want to avoid hunting, and you want to avoid things that will, will harm animals, and so PETA supports it because it's done prior to them being incubated. So getting back to what I was indicating is one of the challenges with locating the nests. Here's one of our proposed solutions, is to, to hiring a company that can help locate the nests. We do have partner organizations. So the Lake Superior National Estuary and Research Reserve will work with students and volunteers to oil all of the, the nests in the Pokegama River area. The golf course superintendent was at the, the meeting and indicated, you know, all the swampy areas surrounding, they see where the geese are kind of just coming in after the, the fledglings are, are hatched. And so, you know, their, their thought was, well, if someone can identify where in these swampy areas the nests are, we'd be certainly happy to help with that. But because of the amount of money and costs that they have been put in trying to react to the geese. Same with Barker's Island Marina and the surrounding area around there. And then Aloise Bay Partners, who are working with the Wild Rice Restoration. So one of the things to just kind of talk a little bit about the eggs sterilization is really is to prevent more geese from being raised in turn, well, and hopefully reduce the number of, of geese born, and therefore, although it's not gonna stop the thousands that are coming here, it'll stop them from continuing to, to grow at the exponential rate. So if you apply, so if you destroy or remove the nest altogether, they are likely to create the nest in an area even more difficult to locate. So the egg oiling, if you apply 100% cord oil on the eggs to prevent them to hatch, the bird will continue to sit on the egg and incubate it, but then after a couple weeks, they're gonna be, you know, when all, everyone else is having success, they're just gonna fly somewhere else and go socialize with other geese, and they're not likely to come back to this area too, which is, which is critical. So mid-May to mid-summer, harass the geese. So at this point, you know, they are, we're done with our, their nesting. You wanna, you wanna get them, you wanna harass them. So that's when we'd start the, the pyrotechnics and the scare tactics, and then you'd take down their nest too. So then you kind of force them into that molt migration. Late June, August, roughly, it really depends, this is kind of a timeline, but all of it's kind of based on, on weather, so I don't have exact dates, but the geese are molting, and they have to stay where they are. The adults can't fly, and the, the young can't fly yet. So if a roundup is to occur, this is the time. And no harassment's at this time, but repellents may be effective. So on Highway 2 and in large, open areas, then we would spray repellents that basically caused indigestion. So when the geese are kind of eating in the grass, they'll get indigestion, and then they don't want to stay in that area either. So, and then fall, you would resume the harassment again. And again, harassment sounds awful, but, you know, everyone's clear with what that means, right? We are working with a, a group, our kids, to create a couple of these for us to put on our fishing piers. They've been very effective in airports out in Utah to stop birds from coming into areas. So it's like, it's a car battery and a portable thing that we're gonna put on a couple fishing piers. People will say, well, gosh, can't I just bring my dog down and, and have my dog harass? If you use dogs, you really want to use trained dogs because Canada geese are protected. So if, if your dog's a birder, and it attacks a goose and injures a goose, then you're gonna run into a situation. So really, if we were to, to, to get dogs, we'd have to get trained dogs, and we could, there's dogs to hire. I don't know that we'd be doing this at this point down on Barker's Island, but I know that question always gets asked, why don't we just have dogs running around? So if you have a really good, well-trained dog, I'd encourage it, but not if they're gonna attack a goose, because otherwise you could get in trouble with that. Also, they say, if you're gonna use trained dogs, you also have to put them in canoes or kayaks out on the water because if dogs are swimming out after them during certain times of the year, the geese will actually grab the ears and will drown a dog. So they, they want you to say that the water is hazard and the land is hazard, so you put them in kayaks or canoes and have them around. So you just have to be careful. Again, more scare cat tactics. And then coming up on next year, this is gonna take several years, even if we aggressively implement all of it, even if we did an aggressive roundup this year, unfortunately, it's not gonna be over this year. So harassment would then stop, and it kind of start that whole cycle again. I did want to share some more information. So these are all the locations, 2019, 1999 to 2015, and then 2016, all the different places in the state of Wisconsin where roundups were conducted. And, and you'll see the number of sites and the number of geese. They began with relocation, and at this point, they do not relocate because there's no place to relocate them to. So then you, then you have to, if you do do a roundup, and you decide that you want the, the meat donated to a local food pantry, you have to have them tested. And so then, if they pass the contaminant testing, you're able to then pay to have them donated, $10 per bird. But you can see a lot of areas, because of the contaminants in the birds, you're not able to do that. Again, this barely touches it, and so really, the preventative components are critical, but when you get to the point of mass overpopulation, your options become much more narrow and limited. So the next step would be to apply for the federal egg oiling permit, and that would then cover all of the partner organizations that would be willing to help with it, and then contacting the various stakeholders, recruiting more volunteers, doing the drone footage, the trainings, and, and kind of as been outlined. So, any questions?
Counselor Bender. Yes, I just wanted to say that Cousin Mark Johnson has a, has a house on Barker's, and they have the silhouette dog, and that does seem to help.
Great.
Counselor Olson.
Linda, is the females, the, the return to, to where they've been before, where they've nested?
They both do.
The males do too?
Mm-hmm.
So the migration, but the, when they, when they head south, the female is actually coming back to the nest that they were in previously, so?
Yeah.
If, if it was easier to round up the nests, find out, locate where all the nests are, silly question, but are they gonna get confused and possibly go somewhere else next year?
That would be the hope.
Okay.
That they're not coming back here, though. You know, that they're relocating somewhere else. Yeah. But the other thing that, the other thing that's worth mentioning that I won't really get strictly into, Duluth doesn't have the same problem because they don't have the same open spaces. Now, they have the same problem with the Wild Rice and some of the other things, but at least from the discussions based on, from Parks and Recreation and, and some of the other partners, they don't have quite the same severity. They seem to like us better for that purpose. The other thing that's worth mentioning is there's a few different kinds. There's the migratory, there's the in-state, and I don't remember, to go into all those details on, but there's a few different kinds of Canada geese too, because when they were federally endangered, they implemented, or they put them into areas. So that's kind of what we're dealing with.
Counselor Kern.
Just note, when the DNR officer was here giving this presentation and answering some of the questions he had, one of his comments was that if he was to develop a geese habitat perfect for geese to land, he would develop spear all over again, and that is the reason why we're having this problem here, so.
Counselor Ventile.
I just wanted to say, one, your knowledge of geese is impressive, holy smokes. I also, I, I've not been shy about my opposition to most of this, but I want to thank you for the time that you've taken with Counselor Kern, also to really give me this on a different level too, so that I understand all of the frustrations, certainly, that exist community-wide. And then I did reach out to LSRI independently and talk to them as well. But regarding the enforcement piece, so we saw the photo of, you know, the person feeding, can you, do you have an exact sort of date when that ordinance? Why am I so echoey? When that ordinance went into effect in a more forceful way? And maybe to, and maybe to the police here as well, Chief Alexander, that escaped me for a second. So what do these tickets cost, and how many are being issued?
First, Director Kadat, do you remember the date?
I believe it was August 16th.
Okay.
And for a first offense, I want to say it was 50, second offense 75, and third offense 150. I know the third offense is 150, but, and it, it went up within the year. I might be incorrectly citing that.
And how active have these enforcements been?
Chief Alexander, are you able to speak to that?
I don't, I don't think we've been very active with it at all. I, I just learned tonight that Parks and Rec did call a couple times for officers to respond, but I don't think citations were issued, so moving forward, that's obviously gonna be something that we have to address.
Right, and in terms of like the partnership within the city, I mean, this is clearly an, an an unimaginable amount of work, just making sure that that's taken seriously. And I know that it's easy to sort of laugh this problem off, but clearly, this is lunacy. So, when we had talked before, Director Kadot, you had talked about Eau Claire doing a massive roundup, but then maybe that, maybe them having to do that again. Can you tell me a little bit about that effort? Please, thank you.
Yeah. As I mentioned, kind of implementing a lot of things and staying on top of those various tactics are necessary and won't necessarily prevent getting to the point of or repeating a roundup. I believe it was three years ago, and it might be on here actually, but that they had done one and then are at the point where they're having to, to kind of do it again, just to kind of as that jumpstart management.
Did they like stop some of the other efforts, the multi-prom?
I don't know that with 100% certainty. I'm sorry.
Counselor Fennessey.
Linda, thank you. It's, uh, when, you know, the closest beach for, you know, for us and our, our family is Barker's Island. And when it's closed more than it's open, that's, that, that's a problem. It's, it's a gross problem. When, you know, when, when the walkways are covered in, in goose poop, it's, I mean, it's, it's just gross. And so, so I appreciate the, the efforts that you've, you've started. And hopefully, we'll see some sort of, you know, synergy getting, getting this population down. So, thank you.
Further questions from the council?
I just wanted to add a little bit to this discussion. I also find a, a number of the tactics that are being proposed here to be difficult to approve. I certainly wouldn't want to be the one doing them myself. And I've received a number of phone calls from concerned citizens finding some of these things simply abhorrent out of, I believe, just concern for, for wild animals that, and from their perspective, haven't done anything wrong. Director Kadot laid out a lot of the actual real concerns that are affecting our community. These are very real public health concerns. And you all kind of laughed at me at the idea that I got chased by a goose. But here's the thing, councilors, that goose got me. Like, it caught me and it hurt. And that happened in front of a school. That was in front of, I think it's, uh, Great Lakes on 28th Street. And I was running pretty quick. And I'm telling you, you wouldn't want this happening to a kid. And, and this will happen to children. These are in parks, in public spaces, and they, they're crowding out people from the places that we want people to be. So, on the whole, while this is a very difficult and unpleasant decision and process, and probably all of us will face at least a little bit of public backlash, I think we have a real responsibility to meet an, an actual public health and, and wildlife concern. We want to enjoy some geese, not this many. Further questions? Thank you.
I got a question.
I'm sorry, Counselor Dalbec.
What about, is there anything that you can feed them that will sterilize them so that when their eggs are hatched, that they're not, you know, they're not, I mean, a goose or gosling or whatever you call them, there's nothing you can feed them?
Not that I've come across. No, it doesn't mean that it's not out there, but not that I've come across.
No research whatsoever that?
Out of, you know, unfortunately, I've done an extensive amount of research on it and have not come across that. No, it doesn't mean it's not out there, but not that I've come across.
Counselor, one of the thing, Counselor, one of the things we need to consider in this whole process is methods that will mitigate the goose problem without having undue outside impacts. Of course, there's poisons and stuff we could give to geese.
I don't mean poison though, Mayor. I mean, you know, a, a birth control type thing. I mean, seriously, you know, they've got it for everything else. Funny.
Thank you, Counselor.
I have one more question though. I, no, I don't have a question. I was going to say, 40 years ago, we used to pile our kids into the car to take them out to see the geese. I mean, we traveled many miles to see them. We'd go to the Horrigan Marsh to see them. Now, I mean, it is, it's right here. We have our own Horrigan Marsh. So, yeah, I just was curious to see if there was something that maybe you could feed them that would not have them produce the eggs.
Further questions or discussion?
Seeing none. Do you want, do you want to wait there? Next one's. Or do you, do you want me just take 8.11? Okay. Well, item 8.11 is the Zags or Bike Share Program update. You have a memo from Director Kadot, Counselors, and I'll have her add to that to provide you an update about where we stand. I have some news recent to today. We do expect to have a fully sponsored four-station Zags for program. I can't tell you who all of the sponsors are because we're still waiting for one final contract, but we do have confirmation that Enbridge will be our third sponsor. And so, that brings confirmed sponsorships to the City of Superior, Essentia Health, and Enbridge. As I said, I have at least a verbal yes from a final sponsor, but until that's confirmed and signed, I'd rather not announce that publicly. But if you have questions for myself or Director Kadot, we can answer them now. Seeing none. We'll move on to item number nine.
Item 9.1, Mayor Payne is appointing Ryan, Ryan Nelson to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Superior for a five-year term. I believe that's...
Right. Counselors, you, you're seeing two appointments here tonight. We found out there's a mistake. Ryan Nelson, while I think still an admirable appointment to the RACs, doesn't actually live in the City of Superior anymore, and so, we can't appoint him. So, if there's no objection, I would rather you confirm only Crystal Brandstatter to the DTA tonight.
Oh.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Dalbec, to appoint only Crystal, to appoint Crystal Brandstatter, Brandstatter to the DTA Board of Directors. Discussion. Sorry, Counselor Sutherland, did you have a question?
No, I'm good on that one.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Vancile.
Just wanted to say how excited I was to see this appointment come forward. It's been a long time since we've had this type of representation on the Board of Directors at the DTA, and I'm super excited to see this happen and looking forward to working with her.
Thank you. Counselor Olson.
Will you be looking for a replacement immediately for Ryan?
Yeah, by the next meeting. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Further questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item, item 11.2 is a resolution of the Common Council approving the form of notice to lease real property.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Fennessey. Is there a discussion? Counselor Olson.
Is this part of the project then for the dock, dock wall rehabilitation?
Yes, Director Sir.
Yes.
And where are we now with, I understand there's no harbor assistance program. Are we, we able to apply for any grants for this work or?
This, this is a harbor assistance project, Dan.
This is a harbor assistance project?
So, yeah. So, you will be, yeah, we've been reallocated, oh, I think for the biennium, $12 million again. So, we were able to score for CHS, and you'll see all the agreements come through at the next meeting along with the bids for the, for the project. So, yeah, no, the harbor assistance is alive and...
It's a pleasant surprise.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 11.3 is a resolution introduced by the Community Development Division, setting a public hearing on May 1st, 2018 at 6:30 in the Government Center for the 2017 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Elman. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 11.4 is a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission, setting a public hearing on May 1st, 2018 at 6:30 in the Government Center to vacate a portion of Ogden Avenue north of North Third Street.
The motion is by Counselor Dalbec, the second by Counselor Fennessey. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 11.5 is a resolution introduced by the Common Council approving a three-year harbor development statement of intentions for the years 2019 to 2021.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Elman. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 11.6 is a resolution introduced by the Community Development Division to set a public hearing on May 1st, 2018 at 6:30 in the Government Center to request comments on community development needs and fair housing choice.
Motion is by Counselor Dalbec, the second by Counselor Fennessey. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 12.1, an ordinance introduced by the Finance Committee amending the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 74-68, Superior Tourism Development Fund Committee.
Motion is by Counselor Kern, the second is by Counselor Fennessey. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 12.2 is an ordinance introduced by the Common Council amending City Code, Chapter 112, Traffic Code, Schedule J, Disabled Parking Zones by adding 2119 Ogden Avenue on both sides.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Sutherland. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 12.3 is an ordinance introduced by the Common Council amending City Code, Chapter 112, Traffic Code, Article 3, Schedule K, Disabled Do Not Block Sidewalk, Sidewalk Zones by adding 2319 Oaks Avenue.
Motion is by Counselor Sutherland, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 13.
We have one person sign up to speak on business by public. I'll invite that person to come forward. Please introduce yourself, sir, with your name and address. And I would remind you, we have three minutes for public comment. You have, you will have three minutes to speak.
Yes. I've timed it out, so it's perfectly two minutes. My name's Charlie DeVille. City councilors, thank you for your service and your leadership.
Sorry, it's the third button from the left.
Don't start timing me yet.
It looks like a person speaking if you're calling.
There we go. Okay. Thank you for your service and your leadership. My name is Charlie DeVille. I am the founding board member, or one of the founding board members of the Lake Superior Disc Golf Community, and we frequent the disc golf course here in Superior often. I have personally been involved in the building of the disc golf courses at Woodland Hills, Lincoln Park, Spirit Mountain, and most recently, the Quarry Disc Golf Course in, in Duluth. As hopefully all of you know from the volley of emails yesterday, my intention is to build a boardwalk to Hog Island and then to build an 18-hole professional disc golf course on Hog Island, making it the world's first and only disc golf island, bringing fame, fortune, and prosperity to the City of Superior. Not only would Hog Island become a destination for day players like myself, but by having a professional course, Superior would be able to host tournaments that would draw in hundreds of disc golf enthusiasts, their friends, their families, and that would have a positive economic impact for local businesses. I want the City of Superior to annex Hog Island from Douglas County, and here's why. The city owns Loon's Foot Landing, which is directly across from the island. It owns all the shoreline from Loon's Foot Landing all the way to the Enbridge Slip, and this includes the Osage Trail, which runs parallel to the shoreline. And in the middle of all that, the city owns a 100-foot boardwalk that juts out into the Hog Island inlet. So, it's already there. The City of Superior recently paid lots of money to have a comprehensive outdoor recreation plan survey conducted in hopes of getting some ideas for new recreational opportunities. This is an opportunity knocking, and I've been knocking on it for a little while. Not too many municipalities in the world have the opportunity to acquire a 45-acre island just 100 feet offshore. You have a guaranteed grand slam. You have a, a community of disc golfers like myself who will do the initial work and take responsibility for the upkeep and the maintenance. You also have a great example of how to do this, right across the bridge, as the City of Duluth recently saw the potential in the Casket Quarry area and worked out a deal to acquire the quarry and the land around it. It is now a destination for ice climbers and disc golfers and will continue to expand recreation opportunities over the next 10 years. And believe me, there is way more danger and liability involved in an abandoned quarry with 100-foot sheer walls therein than there is with people walking over a boardwalk. Duluth can turn, if Duluth can turn an abandoned quarry into an outdoor recreational wonderland, then surely Superior can be able to do this with Hog Island. When I hear that the county isn't interested in giving up Hog Island, that just tells me that they haven't been made a good offer. They are not doing anything with it now. They have never done anything with it in the past, and they have no plans to do anything with it in the future. In other words, the county has a bargaining chip.
That is three minutes, sir.
Oh, that was quick. What I'm asking you guys to do is bargain. So, I appreciate your time, but if somebody would like to spearhead this, please contact me. I can leave, here's my information. I would really appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselors, this is not agendized, so we cannot have discussion unless there's a motion to refer.
I just make a motion.
Uh, I'm sorry, what is your motion, Counselor Sutherland?
To allow, to, to constantly speak or comment on this.
No, it's not agendized, so we can't speak to it at all.
I make a motion to refer it back to the county.
I don't believe we can refer something directly to the county. We have a city-county committee, that's technically established.
I'm, it's my understanding that that piece of property is toxic.
Nope.
And the DNA... I'm, I'm sorry, Counselor, this, we can't discuss this actual item.
Oh, excuse me, I'm...
Would you prefer to refer to the city-county committee?
Prefer to the city-county committee, yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Dalbec and a second by Counselor Bender to refer this item to the city-county committee. Is there discussion on the motion to refer? Counselor Vancile?
I don't have discussion on, on the motion to refer. I just...
Then, then any discussion would be on the...
Well, it's been on before the motion.
Is there further discussion on the motion to refer? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. I will submit this to the county clerk for the next city-county committee meeting. We have no other business by public and no other business on this agenda, so the Common Council is adjourned and we will convene in open session. Or, I'm sorry, in committee of the whole. the whole.
Okay, we'll call the committee of the whole meeting to order and roll call, we can use the regular common council, I think everybody's, nobody's left. I would like to, we do have the power to act on this if we so choose. So at this time, Jason, I guess I would like to turn this over to you to get the agenda item, Shannon, do you want to read what we got going on?
Sure. Recommendation from March 8, 2018 Finance Committee meeting to refer funding request for $6,500 to the St. Louis and Lake Counties Regional Railroad Authority for the Northern Lights Express to a committee of the whole meeting with power to act and to recommend the funding come from the Economic Development Fund.
So with that being said, Jason, it's all yours.
Thank you, Counselor Olson, Counselors, thank you, and Mayor. Just a little, a very brief background because it is getting late here. Last year, the council became, or the city became formal members of the Northern Lights Express Alliance, which allows us a say essentially on the board. I've been, I've been taking that position, going down to meetings in Pine City, sitting with our friends from Duluth, Sandstone, Minneapolis, Inupiah County, those types of folks that are along the route. Every year, there's a funding request. Those funds, and I think Ken will probably talk a little bit about it, pay for some staff, Bob Manslin who was here earlier, pay for lobbyists because essentially the memberships and the money that goes is essentially promoting the project and trying to get it in front of legislators, not only statewide but also federal. Also, you know, advertising, marketing, things like that, so. Counselor Kern, I know referred this, our Finance Committee actually referred this to talk a little bit about it, thought it would be a good idea to have a representative from the, that's been probably since the beginning, right Ken, of kind of this group, which I tell you what, folks, has done a ton of work and has gotten to this point and kind of has a couple of celebration points over the last, over the last month or two, so. Most of you know Ken Beeler, he works at the, he's a Duluth Depot Executive Director, but is also a very passionate man, not only on trains, but also on the Northern Lights Express, so Ken, if you want to give us kind of an update and we'll go from there, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselors, Mayor. Thank you for your past support of the Northern Lights Express project through the Joint Powers Alliance, and this is a renewal of that effort, and as Jason said, we have a lot to celebrate right now. And this is not only our appreciation, but also our congratulations to help see us through to this point. And the point we're at is that we have, and it sounds silly, but we have a Fonzie, and that's a happy day, but it's not that kind of Fonzie. Sorry. Can I start over, Jason? Finding of no significant impact. Now, finding of no significant impact came after a lot of work, as Jason mentioned, it got us to this point. We're following a process set up by the Federal Railroad Administration that says these things must be done in this order to qualify for the federal funding to eventually build this railroad. It's important because that federal amount is 80% of the cost, 20% is state and local and can be in kind. The 80% is the key to this, and the Federal Railroad Administration is very specific of how you get to that point, and it takes a long time to get to that point. The final piece is your finding of no significant impact. It follows a three-year, three and a half million dollar Tier Two Environmental Assessment, which passed without any finding of significant impact. So that means the project is fundable, and that is a place that we are unique in getting. This century, four finding of no significant impacts have been given for passenger rail projects in America. The last one was in 2013, that was all aboard Florida, and the Bright Line Inter-City Rail Passenger Service just began in Florida last December. Before that, it was the Wolverine Project from Grand Rapids, Michigan to Chicago, that one is running. Before that, it was from Chicago to St. Louis, an Amtrak proposal to increase the volume of number of trains running every day, that one is running successfully. You've had four of these this century, three of them have led to successful, sustainable passenger intercity rail service. That's where this project is right now, and that is something we're celebrating, and that's why we're here today to urge you to stay with this project as you have already supported it in the past and be with us again. Bob had to leave, he's got a meeting in the Twin Cities tomorrow, so he apologizes for having to leave early, I apologize for the Fonzie joke, he did leave you this background information, this is the piece that we are taking around now, it's just coming off the printers, so actually you're getting a preview of it, and it is the handout piece that we're sending to legislators, the people that will be making the next round of decisions on this. Call your attention to a couple of pages, you can take this and read it at your leisure, it's much bigger and this is just the internet version of it, but it is a handout, shows the route of the train from Duluth through Superior down along existing rail line, as you know, to downtown Minneapolis, has information on each one of the station stops, you'll find a complete detailed analysis of the Superior Station stop, which has been worked on. And then finally, I call your attention to what this is really about. It's transportation, it's another way to connect northern Wisconsin and your area through your station to the seven-county metro area of the Twin Cities, it's a way to move your veterans down to the Veterans Clinic in Minneapolis, and more importantly, it's about economic development. Transportation has always been about economic development. Where there's a break in transportation, rail meets sail, that's where you have a community, that's where you have economic growth. This is just another part of that economic growth of the future, and we thank you for your support, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Say, Ken, I don't have a question, I just want to say my wife is malaxband enrolled, and this would bring more people to the casino at Hinkley, and so I know she's very much in favor, as am I.
Counselor Kern?
I'm sorry.
Mayor Payne?
Thank you, Mr. Beeler, for coming to speak about the importance of passenger rail in general, but specifically this project. I had some great notes that I wanted to bring down, I forgot in my office, I'm going to try and do it from memory, but just, I kind of expect some strong support from this council to remain a member of this body because it makes such obvious sense, but I think it's important to say a couple of things about it. This is a railroad community, this, transportation of people and goods is what largely built the community of Superior and what keeps it sustainable, but also the future of transportation looks different than the past, or maybe more accurately, it looks a lot like the past in that trains were the very first form of ride share, and millennials especially are relying on car transportation less and less, and as a community, as a city, we're trying to find out, figure out ways to move people around without cars so that we can accommodate the next generation, or even many former generations in a way that is much more, that is safer and more economically successful than automobile traffic. The next step is to connect people between cities, and when we do that, we know that every single community benefits along that line, and in this case, maybe Superior more than a lot of these other places. This is about economic development because it brings people to Superior, but it's also about quality of life because it allows us to go other places. When I leave this meeting tonight, I'm going to buy some concert tickets for a show in the cities, and I'm going to have to take a car there. I don't want to, that costs me a lot of money, quite frankly, it costs you a lot of money because we have to maintain the highway that I'm going to drive on, we have to rebuild it year after year after year, and the surrounding communities have to build that infrastructure as well. If you had a train for me, I'd be paying my own way instead of taxpayers subsidizing me, and that's the biggest difference between passenger rail and our regular highway system. The highway system is 100% subsidized by local, by local, state, and federal governments. Passenger rail is subsidized by passengers, and it's one of the only forms of transportation that is funded that way. But again, it's an economic development, it's an economic development opportunity because it brings people to Superior. It allows people to move in an easier way, and that's why, as Mr. Beeler's mentioned already, and you'll see in your packet, ridership and the economic health of passenger rail across the country is booming, it's succeeding in almost every measurable way. I just want to end what is clearly a speech here, with my first experience with passenger rail, I was 18-years-old, I just joined the Marine Corps, and in the few minutes they allowed me to leave Camp Pendleton in the School of Infantry, I got to hop on the Amtrak, I think, is that, is that the Starlight Express?
Coast Starlight.
Coast Starline, and I could, I could ride that train from San Diego to Seattle. This, nearly every city along the way benefited from me being able to do that because I stopped and spent way more money than I responsibly should have in almost every single place. Passenger rail is good for cities, it's good for the states of Minnesota and Wisconsin, and especially this project is good for Superior, so I hope the council will join me in strongly supporting it, thank you.
You ready, Counselor Kern?
First off, I want to thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate that you take your time out of your day to come here, I know you've been really busy. I want to share your excitement and your passion for railroad and trying to get a train coming up here to bring hopefully tourism up to Superior. It really mimics exactly what we're trying to do with the Better Cities Project and all the work that you've put into, pretty much is a mirror of what we're trying to do up here as well. So thank you for that, I appreciate that. Jason, I got one question for you, maybe two. As we're looking at doing this development, I know when I first got on council, I believe that they had done more of a presentation up there where we could see exactly kind of what our station's going to look like. In that meantime, we have sold a piece of property that was around this train station, is that going to hamper anything with the design or the process, or with having the ability to sit on this panel, do we still have the ability to move something, say the Better Cities Project comes together, that we can merge those two together, or is we kind of locked that location out?
The answer, Counselor, and Counselors and Mayor, I think the, we are not locked into that spot, we had to kind of more or less pick a spot so that we could kind of move forward with the AIS and move forward with that. I think we can have that discussion further down the line. The reason we picked that spot, and just a misconception too, we did not sell that property where the Roundhouse was, I've also gotten questions about that, Waste Management sold that to QuickTrip, however, the good news is, is QuickTrip has agreed to give us an easement through there. The station location would be on the west side moving north just because of the location of the tracks that are coming through there, so just, just to kind of clear that up for the record. But I think, Keith, we are, we're flexible in moving that and potentially putting it somewhere else. I think the focus was, okay, what's, what's an area that's close to downtown? The tracks have been more or less removed, Saha's been put in, in kind of the, the area of the depot, the old depot where the original spot was, so we were kind of looking at, okay, how can we create, make a connection downtown? So there, we will have more of those discussions when we move further, but that's kind of where we're at.
Any more questions? If not, I'd like to ask a couple. Ken, you were at Duluth Days last week.
Yes.
Is this before the legislature in this session at all? Moving forward, or?
Yes, President Olson, there is a bill to support the Passenger Rail Office in MinDOT, and this is one of the projects that they would be responsible for. There's two different versions, as you might expect, one in the House and one in the Senate. It's for funding for the Passenger Rail Office, and if I told you the amounts, I'd be wrong, but I do know that both those initiatives are moving forward. The funded, the office is funded through this biennium, the object here with the initial legislation is to increase the funding for that, right down, they're down to a skeleton, but right now, there really is only one Passenger Rail project in Minnesota for them to work on, so they're pretty well focused on it, which is the one that we're talking about.
So what is that timeline of the biennium?
That would come up in the next year's budget.
Okay, so my point is that this is pretty much right on the edge of tomorrow, not 10 years down the road.
Correct.
So then the only other question that I would have is, is the ask is for 6,500, and I believe that is what we did before?
I think it's about 500, $1,500 more if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Brownson?
It was five, yes.
Yeah, the, the amount is 6,650, I think I had it typed on our Finance Committee in a few minutes, so, yeah, 6,650.
Relatively in the ballpark of what we partnered before. Okay, how many alliance members do we have?
Right now, one, two, three, we're expanding it because we've just added Sandstone, so if you add the city of Duluth, it's, I want to believe that there are nine voting members at this particular time, and if I may just say, we do appreciate Jason's efforts, he has done an excellent job of representing the city of Superior and the residents, and we're very thankful for his ability to be on there and also as a member of the Technical Advisory Committee.
So I too support this in the fashion that I come from a railroad family. I do a lot of traveling between here and the cities, and I think it'd be fun to ride the train like I did when I was a kid, you know? That explains the Minnesota Viking thing, because my dad worked on the railroad and we could go to Minneapolis, so. Anyway, I appreciate all the work you're doing, I know you guys had a big president, presence at Duluth Days, and I support this project. So there's a motion by Counselor Bender, second by Counselor Fennessey, and that motion would be to... Is that right? To amend? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Beeler.
Thank you all very much, and if you'd like more information, at 11:30 this Monday, you're all invited, I know the mayor's going to be there, obviously Jason's going to be there, you're all invited to the depot in Duluth. Minnesota Transportation Commissioner Charles Zelli will be our special guest, he'll be talking about the finding of no significant impact, and he'll also be with the mayors of several other communities, Representative from Minneapolis will be there, Mayor Emily Larson will be the host, and you're more than welcome to come and learn more about it, we will have a complimentary lunch that follows, that's 11:30 on Monday, and if you want to come, just talk to Jason. Thank you for your support.
If there's no further business to come before this committee of the whole meeting, we stand adjourned.